Would like to call to order the November 20th, 2017, regular meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome everyone. It's good to have you with us tonight. We're very happy to have with us tonight Girl Scout Troop 2377 from Center United Methodist Church for presentation of the colors.
Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, honor the flag of your country. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and after our invocation, we'll ask you to come back up and be recognized and receive a pen. We're very pleased to have Pastor Mike Edwards from Piedmont Baptist Church for our invocation tonight.
Let us pray.
If you would, please go to the microphone so they can pick it up on television.
All right, let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we certainly do love you tonight, and we want to thank you, Lord, for the opportunity we have in our country, the freedoms that we have, and we thank you, Lord, for the leadership that you have blessed us with. And, Lord, we pray for this county commissioners' meeting tonight, that God you would give them wisdom and discernment and direction, Lord, as they make decisions, Lord, for this time and, Lord, in the days to come. I pray that, Lord, you'd give them the discernment, and, Lord, I pray that you'd give them the vision, and, Lord, I pray that you'd give them the understanding that they need tonight, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Edwards. We appreciate you being with us. Now if our Girl Scout troop would come to the front and please speak into the microphone and tell us your name and what you enjoy most about Girl Scouts, not Boy Scouts. And feel free to pull the microphone down if you need to, to get a little closer to it. There you go.
My name is Haley Badger.
If you would, turn around and speak into the microphone.
My name is Haley Badger. I go to AT Allen Elementary School, and the one thing I enjoy about Girl Scouts the most is probably seeing my friends every other Friday night and learning more about the community.
Great, thank you.
My name is Addison. I go to Pitts Road School. My favorite thing about Girl Scouts is about having fun with my friends.
Thank you.
My name is Malia. I go to Urban Elementary, and the thing that I enjoy about Girl Scouts is making new friends and having fun.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Badger. The one thing I love about Girl Scouts is being able to be with so many different girls of every kind of culture and ethnicity, being able to see the diversity.
Wonderful, thank you.
Did I say my name is Kylie Charlton? Well, her name is Kylie Charlton, and she's a Daisy, and she goes to Patriots Elementary, and she's in first grade.
Okay, thank you. If you'll go to your left, Commissioner Honeycutt has a pen for you over there. Thank you, we appreciate y'all being with us tonight. Next, we have the approval and/or correction of the minutes, and you have copies of those in front of you. Do I hear any corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Some moves.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We'd also like to welcome Devin Mullins, who is our youth commissioner up front with us tonight. Welcome, Devin. We're glad to have you with us. Next is the approval of the agenda, including the changes to the agenda on page 334. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a change to be made on the agenda tonight. Item number F5 on the consent agenda, this is the one that Conapla City Schools request for matching funds for the federal grant. We've got new additional information that we need to take into consideration, and I'd like to us to move that into our December 4th work session.
Okay.
And with that being said, if there's no one opposed to that, I'd make the motion that we accept the agenda with that change and the other changes.
Very good. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up, we have recognitions and presentations. We're happy to have Bob Bushy with us from Transportation to talk about an award they've received.
Thank you. North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division requires all county transportation departments to submit quarterly operational statistics as well as performance measures. This year, in the September Annual Conference in Durham, North Carolina, I'm pleased to announce that Cabarrus County Transportation received first place in the Performance Excellence Community Transportation category.
Wonderful.
I'd like to recognize just a few of the people that were involved. Everybody could not make it tonight, but I'd like to recognize our management team, Mr. Stan Parnell, Ms. Jessica Hilli. Also like to recognize our customer service representative, Jamie Smith. And I'd like to recognize the drivers who really made this happen. First, we have Delanda Shear. We have Eileen Gray, Ms. Annette Williams, and Melissa Udi. These are the individuals that really made this happen. The way this is graded is off trips per hour, cost per trip, on-time percentage, as well as customer surveys. So we were really pleased and proud to receive this award, and we want to thank the commissioners for your support as well as county management.
Wonderful, congratulations. It's my privilege to serve on the Transportation Advisory Board, and I get to hear those folks talk about all the situations that they deal with and the plans, how to make the service better, and it's an outstanding group of people. I think that all of us that live in Cabarrus County today see the challenges that we have when we try to get from point A to point B. It's becoming more difficult every day, and you guys are out there on the road all day long, and to get that kind of an award, particularly with the on-time designation piece of it is quite an accomplishment. So we sincerely appreciate what you do for the citizens of Cabarrus County on a daily basis. It's great to have that kind of presentation to start off our meeting. Next, we move to informal public comments. I do not have any of the yellow cards that have been submitted, but if there is anyone who would like to address the commissioners, I would welcome them to the microphone at this time. Seeing no one, we will move on to old business. We have one item in old business. Kevin and Kyle, did you have anything you wanted to inform us of before we go through that?
Good evening. Just if anybody has any final questions or comments or concerns concerning the franchise agreement?
I think we have discussed this twice.
This is the second reading, and we've discussed it, I believe, at the July work session when we reviewed the RFP results.
Right, and if anybody would like to read the agreement out loud, I think it's about 100 pages or something, something like that, but we certainly are willing to address any questions that anybody might have. Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the second reading of the Solid Waste Ordinance acknowledging solid waste collection and disposal franchise agreement with Republic Services of Charlotte and awarding a franchise agreement to Republic Services of Charlotte.
Before approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our consent agenda, which we have our items that we have discussed previously at our work session. As was noted earlier, we are removing item F5 from the consent agenda and moving that to discussion at our December work session. Do I hear a motion that we accept the consent agenda with that change?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and the consent agenda is approved. We move now to new business, item G1, and we are happy to have Leigh Ann Nixon from the Economic Development Corporation to talk with us.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. We appreciate this opportunity to bring a project to you tonight and present it. Project Mix, which is Pre-Gel America and Lares Real Estate USA LLC, is considering expanding their existing operations in Concord. Pre-Gel is the largest manufacturer and distributor of specially dessert ingredients in the world, and they've been in Concord since 2006. The company is considering adding approximately 110,000 square feet of space at their current location in the International Business Park at 4450 Fortune Avenue Northwest Concord. Over the next four years, the company would invest a total of $14 million, which would be 9 million in real property and $5 million in personal property, adding five additional mixing lines to their manufacturing process. This project is competitive, with consideration also being given in two other states and two international sites. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant. Based on the estimated $14 million investment, a three-year, 85% Economic Development Grant from Cabarrus County would be $249,900. This would bring net revenue to the county during the same three-year grant period of We're asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% Economic Development Grant, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay, questions from Ms. Nixon. Obviously, this is a project that we've discussed before too, and I think it's particularly exciting when we have local companies that want to expand here in Cabarrus County, and if any of you have not had an opportunity to taste their finished product, I would highly recommend it. The gelato is delicious, and I know they do other things as well, but...
Yes, they do.
It's an impressive operation that they have there. So commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this? Okay, we have a motion to approve an economic development investment agreement, three years, 85...
Chairman, are we supposed to have a public hearing?
Yeah. That's right, we are. Okay, we will open the public hearing on this economic development grant and invite anyone to the microphone that would like to speak. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and now go back to where we were.
Move for approval on this economic development grant.
Okay, very good. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up, we have from Department of Human Services, Bob Bushy, back to talk about the Community Transportation Capital Grant.
This is our FY '19 5311 capital grant. For this year, we're going to ask for five replacement vehicles as well as 25 tablets for a total grant amount of $312,250 with a 10% local match, $31,225. This will require a public hearing, and then we ask that you adopt a resolution.
We will open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak in regard to the 5311 Community Transportation Capital Grant. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I think we have discussed this at previous meetings as well. So do I hear a motion to accept the fiscal year 5307... No, I'm on the wrong page. 5311 Community Transportation Capital Grant and related resolutions.
Some news.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, we have also from Transportation, fiscal year 19, urbanized area funding, and Bob is back at the microphone again. You're the popular guy tonight.
There you go. So for FY '19, for the 5307 urbanized area capital funding, we are asking for $196,500 with a 20% local match, $39,300. These funds will be used for preventative maintenance, which is all we are allowed to use the funds for, as we are not a fixed route system. This will also require a public hearing and adoption of resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak in regard to the urbanized area funding, formula funding program, the 5307 grant. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 19, 5307 urbanized area grant and related resolutions. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is item number four, Cabarrus County Schools' request for additional funding for the new elementary school in Harrisburg. We're happy to have Tim Louder to talk with us about that.
Thank you very much. As we discussed in our work session last week, or maybe it was two weeks ago, the reason behind the additional funding, obviously, the square footage of the building has gone up due to some legislative changes, and we're also concerned about construction market with probably a budget value of about 200 ours per square foot we're going to see in the building come January. And so with that, we have requested additional funds now before we go into the financing side, so we won't have an issue when we come here and people will say, "Oh, by the way, we're three million dollar budget." So we thought we better have that discussion up front.
Right.
So we're pressing the additional funding at this time. And by the way, I really appreciate your comments in Sunday's paper. They were dead on for answering the question in the article, so thank you very much, Chairman Louder.
Yes, absolutely. Well, and I think they did a good job on that. Our folks in the community need to understand the implications of some of the things that are passed by the General Assembly has a bigger financial impact on us on the local level than I think maybe they realize. It seems our favorite term is unintended consequences.
Sometimes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good intentions sometimes just go awry.
Right. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Louder?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. At the end of our discussion last time, my memory might not be exactly right, but a piece of that was some utility work?
Yes.
That you guys had some negotiations with the town of Harrisburg. Has that been resolved? Are we eating the full piece? Are they providing any support? And how much? I'll just give you a long question, and then you can... How much of, I think the total's 4 million, and 3 was for the construction side, I think a million was for the utility piece? So just go through that utility piece again. I just wanted to get my memory jogged.
Well, the property we purchased is outside the town of Harrisburg, and so therefore, according to town policy, if you wish to receive utilities, then you have to annex into the town of Harrisburg, which we are in the process of doing so. And once we annex into this, if utilities are not there, then you're responsible for extending the utilities to your site, and they will allow you to hook onto their facilities and extend those. We will actually extend about 1,600 feet of water line that'll pick up at the Bloom Development currently owned Hickory Ridge Road and extend it 1,600 feet through our property at a time as required by their depends on development ordinances.
100% on us, you, us.
That's the developer, yes, sir.
Okay. And when the original... And I'm sorry if I didn't ask this before, but so when we did the original planning, I mean, the site hasn't moved, we knew how far we were going to have to run utilities, but why is this an increase over what you guys had originally thought you were going to do?
Actually, the budget was set not knowing what site we had. You know, the budgets were set two years ago. We had not purchased a site or had not acquired a site yet at this time.
Thank you.
And so these figures that we have here, you've got down $4 million for the increase in construction costs. That's partially the bid climate and partially the additional classrooms are going to have to be built because of the changes in Raleigh.
Sir.
And then the $200,000 is the utility piece of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not the full million.
I missed that. I was not looking at that page, and that is not what I was remembering from before. I thought the utility cost was a more significant number, so, okay.
Our preliminary number's about $240,000, but I think we'll be able to come in under that because it's some design, we can absorb some design money, it's in our contingency design. Design.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Louder? Okay, so commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Chairman, I want to get some clarification here on the letter that we have from the chair of the school board. It says the total funding requested, $4,756,000, and then on the requested action, it's showing I'd like to get the clarification on that.
Now, on the letter that I'm looking at, it shows 47... $4,766.
Right. 4766, and on the action, it's showing $4,677. Is that a typographical error?
Good catch.
I don't know that.
Do you know the number? Oh, okay. It says...
And it's typographical. I'm glad you asked that, too, because if this way the agenda was written, it doesn't tell you where the money's coming from. I thought y'all might want to know that also.
Mm-hmm.
So the amount is the $4,766,000, so that was the transposition of numbers for the agenda cover page versus the letter. The $4 million additional amount we will have to cover in our debt. So at this time, we're not going to be doing a budget amendment for the $4 million, but the request for the utility extension and the increased architectural and engineering fees, I'd like to present that to come out of our capital reserve money that we'll be transferring when I present the CAFR next, the annual financial report, in December. There are adequate funds that we'll be able to transfer. So if it's your wish tonight, we'll reduce that amount, and we'll transfer over for capital reserve purposes by the $766,000 and be able to go ahead and fund these two additional prices. We don't want to borrow money for our architecture and engineering or the utility extension, so the $4,766 is the proper number, but the $4 million, I'd like to take, could borrow money of that when we issue a bet in spring, and the $766,000 I'd like to take from capital reserve funding that will be available for our general fund when I present the CAFR next week. Next line.
We don't want to finance little things like that. We end up talking millions, and we can cover that, I think. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this request from Cabarrus County Schools.
Okay, and that would be in the amount of $4,766,000?
Right.
Just to get that discrepancy cleared. Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is item G5 from Infrastructure and Asset Management. We're happy to have Kyle Billifer to talk with us about parking lots.
Good evening. When we spoke at the work session, we had located three different parking scenarios to move both courthouse state employees and also employees from the governmental center. We are working on the agreement with the city of Concord. Our attorney has drafted up something, and I've sent it over to them. That is at no cost for 50 spots that will go to the clerk of courts, DA's office, and mediation. The other lots we were looking at, and there are aerials in your actual agenda item this time, show the other two lots that we're looking at. One of the folks that we were dealing with had put a contingency on there that they wanted us to look at leasing them spots at our Board of Elections as they were creating an event center across the street. We have since talked to them, and the leasing of those 35 spots at the Board of Elections is not a deal breaker, so I told them that I felt we were going to pass on that. However, that did increase their cost of renting their lot by $100 a month, raising that total to $9,300 for a 12-month period.
And that's both of the two lots?
No, just the one that says 45 spots beyond Cabarrus Avenue.
Okay, well, I'm showing art enterprises. It looks like two parcels there.
Yes. It's two parcels, but one lot, and the line runs right through the middle of it.
Okay.
So they've asked me for basically a draft of what our agreement would be, and I told them that if you guys wanted me to move forward with that cost, I would go ahead and speak with our attorney about drafting something up. In the meantime, we've also reached out to Windstream, and I hope to hear something from them, and maybe the rate is more reasonable. At this point, we're just looking for 45 to 50 spots and basically at the best cost possible, but the deal of the Board of Elections is off the table.
What's the total number of spaces that you're looking for?
Hopefully, around 80 is what we're shooting for, 70 to 80. I'm sorry, between the lots for just the governmental center employees, the 50 for the courthouse employees at the city deck is separate. That's as much as that we could get from the city, and they were very gracious to give that to us.
And that would be moving county employees to these little bit more remote lots to leave the closer lots open for the public.
Yes, church lot number two, so where the fireworks were shot from the other day. That will be the primary parking lot for any citizen coming to the courthouse.
It's just going to be kind of like a lot of the other projects that we're seeing currently, like the widening of ID5 is painful in the process, but it's going to be a lot better when we get finished.
Can't get the baby without the labor pains, yes.
Right, okay, very good.
As we are trying to find all these to make it easier on everybody, especially the citizens getting to the courthouse. One other note that wasn't included on the agenda item that needs to be included in the motion, I've spoken with our finance director, and we need approval to move $10,000 from the contingency fund for the parking deck to the fund where we would pay for these leases.
Okay.
So Mrs. Farrington wanted me to go ahead and put that into the motion so that she would allow us to move, again, $10,000 from the contingency to pay for these leased parking spaces. spaces.
Okay, and the way that this requested action is worded, does that give you the flexibility since you're still in negotiation?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it does. I wanted to kind of gauge everybody and again, at the last work session, the biggest concern was those Board of Elections spaces and I wanted to come back and, and explain to you what the owner had told me on those before I engaged our attorney to work up anything.
Right. Okay, other questions for Mr. Billifer? Okay, then do I hear a motion to approve parking lot leases subject to the attorney review and authorize the finance director to prepare the appropriate budget amendment and related, wait, I'm reading the wrong one. You know, this is the right one. And related 2017 limited obligation bond project ordinance, does that include what you need to move it from contingency?
Actually, the $10,000 is already in the fund, which we need to move it out of the contingency into the line items we can spend it.
Okay, so, and to include in that motion that we move $10,000 from the project contingency fund for this purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to just ask one question for the viewing audience. When approximately will all of this take place, Kyle, so that the viewing audience, because we won't be discussing this no more and so they'll, it might be in the paper or something like that, but if someone's watching it, what do you anticipate?
I'm actually planning on coming in front, in front of you in December with their first schedule of construction. But the answer to your question is lots three and four, where the parking deck is going, to shut down right after the first of January and for construction to begin on January 8th. And that is when all of this will take place.
Well, that's a good, that's a good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to appointments to boards and committees and we only have one item this month. Michael Smith, the Cabarrus EMS representative on the Transportation Advisory Board, has resigned from his position with the county and a request has been made to remove his name from the roster. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Michael Smith from the Transportation Advisory Board and thank him for his service.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I'm sure probably in a month or so, we'll be looking at someone to replace him. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We have a number of reports for informational purposes included in the agenda and at this time, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Does anyone have updates? Yes, ma'am?
Here's the latest update from the Cabarrus Rowan MPO Board Meeting that we had last week.
Okay.
There should be one for, there should be enough of it.
Very good. Are there other reports?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment that I thought Susie Morris and the Planning Development, Planning and Development Department in conjunction with the town of Harrisburg did a nice job on presenting a land plan down in Harrisburg that was well-attended. And I just, I think the citizens were, were well-served with the organization of the meeting. I apologize, I, there's a consultant that's working with them and I just cannot remember who it is, but the group as a whole did a very nice job of presenting that and so, just...
Meg Nealan.
I'm sorry?
Meg Nealan.
Meg Nealan, yes. And so, the, a lot of good information was shared, some give and take as far as information given back to the staff and the consultant from the citizens and I just wanted to commend them for doing such a good job.
Great, thank you. Any other reports?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report other than I just wanted to congratulate Economic Development on your new monthly newsletter, the outlay there, the way you've got it all laid out. Robbie, it's great. It does the comparisons and, you know, looking at current active projects, 50, that number always looks good, sometimes a little higher than others. And the way you've got it laid out, it's different than what it's been and I like the way it works, so it's good. And then I wanted to say that I was fortunate enough on Friday of last week to do another segment of Out and About with Channel 22 on the Highway 85 widening project. A lot of information there for the viewing audience to, when it comes out, I don't know when David and them have it out, probably Wednesday or Thursday of this week, maybe. I don't know. But I met with the resident engineer for the Cabarrus County side of the I-85 project and also with the Rowan County resident engineer and we had a good discussion about the project itself, the finalization dates for both counties. And so, I just want to encourage you when it comes out, I hope that you'll get some of that information so you'll know what's going on up that way. Thanks.
Thank you. We continue to get a lot of comments from folks that watch the Out and About segments on Channel 22. Also, I would encourage folks to go to the new county webpage. I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised at how easy it is to maneuver and all of those programs as well as the recordings of these meetings are available there on demand at any time. Occasionally, we see folks that, that say they are not on the cable system, so they don't get Channel 22. Well, that's another avenue that they can pull those programs up at any time, so we encourage folks to look at those. Any other comments? Okay, we also have general comments by board members, which I suspect we've already covered, but we're open if anybody else has anything they'd like to add. Devin, we thank you again for being with us tonight. Anything you'd like to share with us about the activities of the youth commission?
No, sir, not specifically tonight. I'd just like to say thank you so much for having me and it's been a pleasure.
Great. Well, we're delighted for you to be here. Okay, we do have need of a closed session tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 3, 4, 5, and 6 to discuss pending litigation, economic development, acquisition of real property, and personnel. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and we are now in closed session. Thank you.